It's 5:30, time to call our meeting to order. This is Monday, November 19th. Roll call, Carl, please.
Councilmember Remley.
Aye.
Ronain.
Aye.
Lunsman.
Aye.
Slate Hanson.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Bunsonus.
Aye.
Olson.
Aye.
Rux.
Aye.
Mayor Leeson.
Aye.
Pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Motion on last week's minutes, please.
So moved, second.
Motion Bunsonus, second by Rux. If there are no changes, all in favor of approving, say aye.
Aye.
Pose no. Pose no. Motion carries. We'll dispense with the roll call for that one, but otherwise we're... Nobody signed up for open forum? We need a motion for the consent calendar, please.
Move, approval, second.
Motion Olson, second by Rux. Questions on any of those items, A, B, and C? Roll call, please, Carl.
Councilmember Remley.
Aye.
Ronain.
Aye.
Lunsman.
Aye.
Slate Hanson.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Bunsonus.
Aye.
Olson.
Aye.
Rux.
Aye.
Mayor Leeson.
All right, motion carries. Under new business tonight, item A is proposed ordinance 181102 regarding park closing hours.
Council, the city administration is recommending first reading, past first reading of this proposed ordinance. This was brought to me by both the Parks Department and our Police Department requesting a change for park closing hours within our, within the park. If you'll note, the changes include a definition of camping at section 36-1. To make it clear that when we're, when the count, when the ordinance later refers to camping activity, we understand what that means by definition. And then under prohibited activities for section 36-63, we did a little bit of a language change there at 13, 14, and 15, just to make it read consistent with the rest of the ordinance. But the primary change is that the addition of paragraph 16, sub 16, which closes the park for pedestrian travel between the hours of 11 o'clock PM and 5 AM. I think it needs to be pointed out that the change does not prohibit persons walking on the walkways without delay. If they are just simply using the walkways and walking, they're fine. If they are, however, in the park and not on the walkways and not traveling on the walkways, then they will need to be at either a scheduled event or camping or the guest of a camper and at the campsite. A similar change is made at section 36-70 regarding people who's, who are in their vehicles in the parks. They also can be on the roadways and traveling without delay through the park. But they, if they are stopped, then they would need to either be at a scheduled event or camping or the guest of a camper and at the designated campground area. Again, the request to change is to, to address vandalism and other misbehaviors in the municipal parks, which primarily occurs at night. So this, both the Parks Department, and by the way, I should point out that the Park Board did recommend approval of this change as well, but the city would recommend approval of the ordinance.
Moved.
Motion Bunsonus and second by Remley. Questions from anybody?
Was this established prior that the parks were closed from 11 to 5? Because I see signs at all the parks saying the park is closed from 11 to 5 already.
It was established for that, for vehicle traffic, and I'm assuming that that's what those signs were intending. And that's why partly the, one of the motivators is we wanted clarification for our police officers as to who exactly should not be, you know, off the roadways or walkways in the park. And so that's, we have, you know, two or three every year where there are questionable activities going on and the police officers are required to essentially tell these people, depending on whether they were in their car and then they were close to their camping, whether or not they violated the ordinance. This clarifies that much, much better for the officers.
Jennifer?
Clarify for us, what is the, what's the penalty?
Well, the maximum penalty for any, for any city code violation is a class two misdemeanor. And that's a $500 fine and/or 30 days in jail. I should tell you that we do have a fine and bond schedule that this, this item would be listed on the fine and bond schedule. And so by, by that schedule, the, it's called power of attorney, but the amount that would be scheduled, set on the ticket, I think, is 150.
Okay.
Other questions on the motion? If not, we have a motion and a second to pass. First reading of this ordinance proposal. Carl?
Councilmember Rux.
Aye.
Olson.
Aye.
Bunsonus.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Slate Hanson.
Aye.
Lunsman.
Aye.
Ronain.
Aye.
Remley.
Aye.
Mayor Leeson.
Aye, passes first reading. The next item B is a resolution, levying an annual special assessment for parking facilities. Carl?
Thank you, Mayor. Annually, we do this, it's pretty routine. I go through the different property valuations for the properties within the district, put a levy against that that's been recommended by the Parking District Board over the years, calculate what the assessment's going to be, and take it over to the county so that they can assess it then.
Okay.
Move approval.
Second then. Motion Bunsonus and second by Johnson. Any questions on what we're doing?
Is this the first year we've cracked 100,000?
Yeah.
Okay. Any other questions? Roll call then, Carl, to pass the resolution.
Councilmember Remley.
Aye.
Ronain.
Aye.
Lunsman.
Aye.
Slate Hanson.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Bunsonus.
Aye.
Olson.
Aye.
Rux.
Aye.
Mayor Leeson.
Aye, motion carries. And also, Carl, you have a property tax abatement, $39?
Yes, again, thank you, Mayor. Another pretty routine one. We do these occasionally when the county sends them over to us. This one, trying to remember why they wanted that abated. Oh, the mobile home has gone from the lot, and so the taxes aren't going to be collectible because there's nobody there.
Okay. Might as well abate then.
Second.
Motion Bunsonus, second by Lunsman. Any questions, anyone? Roll call for that, Carl.
Councilmember Rux.
Aye.
Olson.
Aye.
Bunsonus.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Slate Hanson. Lunsman.
Aye.
Ronain.
Aye.
Remley.
Aye.
Mayor Leeson.
Aye, motion carries. Item D, Mr. Ron is here to ask us to approve a joint funding agreement, an addendum to the agreement. Bob?
Yes, this is in agreement with USGS for groundwater monitoring modeling we did. It basically states that they're going to spend another 15,000, authorizes them for, of their share for this year.
Move approval.
Second.
Motion Bunsonus, second by Rux. Questions, anyone? Carl?
Councilmember Remley.
Aye.
Ronain.
Aye.
Lunsman.
Aye.
Slate Hanson. Johnson.
Aye.
Bunsonus. Olson.
Aye.
Rux.
Aye.
Mayor Leeson.
Aye, motion carries. And Bob, you also have a recommendation on water treatment chemical bids.
Yes, these are chemicals that we use for the water treatment. They include everything but our powder activated carbon, and that's because we instigated performance standards this year. So we're still doing some testing on those to determine which will be the most cost effective.
Any general comments about the bids and your recommendations?
They came in pretty competitive. We have quite a bit of competition this year, which is good. We didn't have some, very many sole bit, sole chemical bids. So that's always good. We're going to continue to look and see how we can improve the plant and be able to take other people's chemicals and make it competitive.
Okay. Need a motion to approve the recommendation?
Move to approve.
Motion Johnson, second by Bunsonus. You have a list of the 2018 and the 2019, in case you have any questions on any of those bids. If not, Carl, roll call.
Councilmember Rux.
Aye.
Olson.
Aye.
Bunsonus.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Slate Hanson.
Aye.
Lunsman.
Aye.
Ronain.
Aye.
Remley.
Aye.
Mayor Leeson.
Aye, motion carries. Thanks. Item F, bills presented from city departments. 2,121,718 Northwest Energy Utilities, 3812 Century Link, November Charges, 3926. Barnes Group Utility Bill Postage, 4240. Utility Bill Account Refunds, 395. Clark Engineering Work on Groundwater, 5293. Ringenberg Electric, for work at the airport, 1,050. And NVC Charges at the Airport, 307.
Motion, second.
Motion Olson, second. Bunsonus, Carl?
Councilmember Remley.
Aye.
Ronain.
Aye.
Lunsman.
Aye.
Slate Hanson.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Bunsonus.
Aye.
Olson.
Aye.
Rux.
Aye.
Mayor Leeson.
Aye, motion carries. Lynn?
Okay, thank you. We have two presentations this evening. I would like to start with the Deputy Finance Officer first and let him tell you about our most recent updates within operations. And then from there, we'll go into a presentation by Robin where we'll talk about our next arterial street project.
Thanks, George.
All right, thank you, Lynn. I have a big announcement to introduce tonight. We, beginning Friday, have been enrolled in online utility billing. So that's what I'm here to talk about. Utilities can be paid online, including water sewer, garbage recycling, and stormwater. The online billing portal can be accessed from our webpage at aberdeen.st.us. There's a link right on the homepage. And also, if you go to the "I Want To" tab, you can access it there. It's actually hosted elsewhere, but all of our links tie directly to it. We accept all major credit and debit cards. And once enrolled, users can view consumption, make payments, and schedule automatic payments. In order to create an account, you need your account number and the last amount that you paid on your bill. If you need help obtaining that information, you can call the finance office at 626-7026 or look at your last bill if you're on ACH. Online payments are subject to a 2.5% surcharge that is not greater than the cost of acceptance, meaning that there is a, the fee is less than what we are charged by our merchant processor. We're losing money by offering the service, but a lot of people demand it, so we are providing it for that reason. In addition to our surcharge, our payment processor charges a $1.25 transaction fee. The municipal online payment fee will appear as separate on your statement for your card. Just a reminder, we still accept payments by cash and check in person at our Dropbox and through the mail. Our preferred payment method, which is ACH, is used by approximately 1/3 of our 9,000 utility accounts, so it has really high usage. And that's, that's ACH, which is convenient, reliable, and free to all users who are enrolled. If you need a form to enroll in that, they're available on our website as well. So once again, our online utility bill payment portal is now live at aberdeen.st.us.
Questions of Jordan? I'm always surprised, Jordan, how many people walk their payments into City Hall.
It is really surprising.
I have one question. What are we doing to communicate with the public that we do offer ACH? I know you have, you know, the card is just the billing, and there's really not a lot of space in there to advertise anything, but is there anything we can do to try to bump that percentage up to more like 50%?
Carl could probably speak more to that with efforts they've done in the past.
Yeah, we try to push that whenever we can. Lot of times, word of mouth. Anytime that we have any public engagements or whatnot, like this venue, we've spoken about it quite often at this venue. Really, and really encourage people, if they have problems with late payments or anything like that, to set it up that way because you can really save in the long run.
Right.
If you forget to make your payment on time, this comes out automatically the 20th of every month. So it's, it's really simple and it's really time-saving. And of course, it does save us a little bit of cash too because it doesn't have, we have a lower charge.
Is there any, any thought of passing that savings on to the customer? I know with other, you know, ACH, APP payments, we do it in our business. We give them a percentage discount because they use it.
We've, we've kicked that around a little bit. I don't know if the percentage would be good and great enough that we're saving to pass that on to the customer in a, in a real material format, just because of the dollars that we're looking at here. We did consider doing a promotion-type deal where if someone signs up for ACH during November and December, you get a $5 credit on your first bill that comes out ACH. The only drawback to that is then everybody that's already signed up for ACH will say, wait a second, where's my five bucks? And we'd have to go back and do that, so. But, you know, that's things that we've thought about. We haven't ruled anything out. We really do like the ACH feature and anything we can do to promote it.
Yes, thanks.
So.
Thanks.
So I will just mention something in regards to that ACH in particular. Oh, I mean, we've had that 10, 12 years now, at least?
Hmm, oh yeah, at least, yeah.
At least. I was contacted by the editor of the newspaper over the weekend complaining that he couldn't use ACH. So I did let him know that that is a feature that we've offered for as long as I could remember. And so I kind of suspect that might be news in his opinion. So maybe paired with this, we might see some promotion of that coming up soon.
Maybe get a quote from the editor.
The form is available on our website as well. If you go to our online payment, you can download the form, print it off, send it in with a voided check.
Yeah, he showed me that he found it. So I suspect you'll be, I guess, that's probably the information I don't need to share.
Anything more for Jordan?
That's really big news.
It's a big change.
Thank you.
Robin? So you brought Stu with you for backup?
Yeah, he said he was here for moral support, so we'll, we'll see how much he knew. Anything else we could have had was...
Our interns show up and then he could have helped us too. Because he helped us with estimating and doing some of those things. So what, what I'd like to talk about tonight, we've, I did the information to you last week through Lynn's manager's report. So you've got some of the data that we wanted to share. Traffic counts, things of that nature. So what we want to do tonight is just make sure we visit a little bit about that information that was shared. Would like to visit with you a little bit about our current process and how you see that as, whether it's the right way to go or if we need to modify things. We want to find out if you want to see things done a little bit differently. The process before, of course, was just, we had a vision, council commission had a vision years ago, and we've kind of finished that vision of those projects. Now we need to move on to the next phase of projects, and that's part of our job is to make the next 20 years, you know, figure out what we want to do over the next 20 years or so. And, you know, we'll talk about the priorities and I'd like to get a feel for some of the council's expectations on what we're, what our outlook should be versus utilities, how we, you know, stub out for, for new subdivisions, things of that nature, and what, what we need to do to make sure we're moving in a forward fashion. So this is the list that, that you saw in the information that was given to you last Thursday. No particular order. We just wanted to make sure that those roads are out there, and you'll be given an opportunity to add to that list here in a bit. These were our average daily count, traffic counts summary. This summarizes it a little bit differently than what you had in your list. You had to go back and forth in the list. This summarizes the whole works, so you can see the order of which they, they fall into. We did talk about the, kind of the pavement condition assessment. And what, what we see is, is most of the concerns, of course, second, the Second Street overpass, we do have ride concerns. That's something we continue to have, the bumps at the end of each of the structures. We'll fix them. A few years later, it's going to show back up again. At some point in time, we probably need to do something a little more permanent so that we're not having to go back and fix every few years. Dakota Street, we've got condition issues on all three of those. And there, you know, you've got the, the ride issues where you're clumping on each, each slab. You know, you're, you're loping a little bit. And that's, that's the hard, hard part about concrete streets. At some point, if there, if we don't have the right devices in there to keep the slabs from shifting relative to each other, we'll end up with that loping motion on each slab. South Melgarde, of course, that, you know, that piece of Brown County 19 or South Melgarde is really narrow. It's high relative to the ditches. We've got some drainage issues out there. So those, that would be our main concerns out there. East Melgarde, kind of the same thing. It's narrow, you're coming into that curve. We've had a number of vehicles exit that curve just because they're going too fast or there's slippery conditions. And, and the drainage out there is not great. It's, you know, there's cattail slews through that whole thing that the water has to drain through. And it's always a challenge to get that water to pass through in a timely manner. Old 281, going basically from Shriver's all the way out to the signals where the bypass starts. That's a fairly lengthy piece of roadway that we took over from the DOT. We've done a number of repairs to it. As I told you here a while back, we may not be able to do that type of repair. It's going to get more expensive. We're going to have to change the types of repairs we do or, you know, what we've been doing, I don't think is effective anymore. Utility considerations on each and every one of these, well, not each and every one of them, on a number of them, we do have concerns or some things that we need to address as far as the utilities go. I've given you some general numbers as far as estimates of what some of the, some of the utility costs would be if we want to do full reconstruction on a lot of these utilities. And the numbers go up pretty fast, especially given, you know, some of the stuff on Dakota Street. We've got double sanitary sewer on part of that, one higher, one lower. We've got inflow infiltration issues with some of those sections. We certainly have the option of lining portions of it, and some of the, some of those portions have been lined. We just want to make sure that, that either we address them ahead of time or during construction. Couple of the areas like South Melgarde or East Melgarde, those, you know, are probably primed for doing some additional utility extensions, just to make sure that some of that property is ready to go. But we have to come up with a mechanism to be able to get those costs back. We don't have a development fee appropriate to be able to recoup those costs. That's something that, that has hinted us in how we go about it. We've talked a little bit internally about deferred special assessments or things of that nature. I'm not sure the best route to go, but that's something that probably should be discussed to make sure that we can continue to move the community forward and we're not stubbing our toe where areas may be decent for, you know, some kind of development, and we don't have the infrastructure there to be able to help that, move that along. We talked a little bit about safety considerations on the, on the two sections of Melgarde. The other one obviously is the old 281 at Eighth Avenue. That skewed intersection has been a problem as long as I've been in town. It's, you know, we've done some things with Luverd, making sure that you can't see the, the traffic signal from the wrong direction because there, you get the wrong, the wrong feeling on when you've got the green. It does become more difficult to turn back, to look over your shoulder. Those, those skews are just a little too far to be comfortable to look back at traffic. And that's something that, that has helped create some additional accidents in that area. I'm going to use a term here that, don't, don't shoot the messenger, but it's probably a spot that would be appropriate for a roundabout. Roundabouts are, are not very popular in most communities to start out with. And after people learn how to drive them, they, they embrace them. But it's that first hurdle of getting people used to it. Sioux Falls went through a process where they actually built one out of traffic on the south side of town and let people go practice, just so they'd get used to it when they built their first one. I don't know that we'd go to that extreme, but people learn to use them and they're very effective in this type of intersection. So it's something that at some point in time, we may have to have that discussion and...
So what level of traffic do you use around those types of mechanisms?
You talking how many vehicles per day?
Yeah, yeah.
I don't know that there's a limit. I think you, it's the number of lanes you put into it.
Okay.
And that would be one of the challenges here because we've got two lanes each direction coming into it. And you have a few choices on how to design that. So you, you neck that traffic down to one lane coming in, probably after the signal's up north. And then maybe in that Shriver's area, you squeeze that traffic down to one lane. Then you don't have that confusion of what, which, which route to take going out of that traffic circle, so.
So what you're talking about is, not to interject, but for the old 281 section, you'd probably go to, instead of two lanes going each way, one lane?
It's possible, yes. Maybe do like a typical three-lane section and then have the, the one lane going through that traffic circle, yeah. And, and as you see the numbers, and the numbers are, are projected numbers for costs, those are real general broad numbers. Connor came up with a little bit different number for us today to look at for old 281, less than the number that I had projected. But bottom line is it's still in that neighborhood of 5 million, and we haven't done design, so we don't know where we're at. That's a big number for that stretch of pavement. Until, until that decision is made at that intersection, I think you probably might look at something, a lesser cost alternative, just to get the ride back and to try to, try to push that pavement a little further down the road until you're ready to make the step with some kind of a roundabout or some other alternative for, for traffic control at that intersection. The next slide I've got here, we've tried to stay on that two-year cycle for a long time, and it's been effective, I think, for over, over the years. The question is, is it pushing us too hard where we're using too much of our current budget just to stay on that cycle? Or are we not pushing it far enough where we're losing traction on, on the amount of improvements we should be making and our pavement condition keeps going downhill? You know, there's some philosophical questions that I think, and I'm not asking for answers tonight. It's, it's to open that discussion so that we can come to some conclusion, give, give staff a little better feel of where the council would like to head with stuff. And we've got time, we've got time to make some decisions on, on priorities. So it doesn't, this is not something I expect an answer tonight from you guys, but it's to open that dialogue. We, you know, and, and actually, this goes back 20 years. We have spent so much money on these road projects. And each year, as the cost of, of the construction went up, the money we were getting from, from the state was not keeping up with what the costs were. So consequently, you're putting more of your second penny money into those projects. And a lot of those projects, we had to upsize storm sewer, we had water main that needed to be replaced, things of that nature, which drives the cost of those projects up too. On several of these, we do end up with additional things. We talked about the utility improvements, and some of these, we also have signal improvements that should be made. Good example would be Third Avenue and Dakota Street. First Avenue, we have done, and that's a more modern signal. The one at Third Avenue is pre-timed. It doesn't have a lot of the ability to sync up with the rest of the system. And, you know, you can add 200,000 easily to these systems to get a modern traffic signal put back in. You know, and the, the question that I had really is, should we only be looking at reconstruction or is it time to look at maybe some other alternative? Doing the white topping like we did out on Eighth Avenue, which was substantially less cost? I don't know what we figured. We saved probably in the neighborhood of 40% on that, somewhere in that range. It was significantly less, and our construction time was so much better. You know, it was, there were a lot of positives, but we didn't have utilities underneath that had to be addressed. And then the other thing that happens inadvertently, when we do reconstruction, we end up having to replace, if you're putting down a 40 or 50-year... If, if you're putting down a 40 or 50 year pavement, you can't afford to leave a utility underneath, a storm sewer, sanitary sewer. It's under capacity or, uh, has condition or could have condition issues. We just can't afford to leave those in place because we'll be replacing it five, 10, 15 years down the road. So then the question becomes, the question becomes, you know, do we kick the can down the road by having, um, some other alternative and allowing us to use up the effective life of that utility or those utilities? Not put them in before they are needed and then, and then do that reconstruction 10, 15 years down the road. That's one of the thoughts we have. And the, this, if we do go down that road, uh, where you look at other alternatives to reconstruction, are there some parameters we should be looking at? Like we want to make sure that we're not redoing this road 10 years down the road, that we kick that can down the road at least 15 or 20 years. So people don't have to endure reconstruct, or some kind of construction so close together. Or should we be looking at doing it based on a benefit cost analysis, which would be another alternative where we think the biggest, best bank for the buck is based on some numerical number, numeric, numerical number, some numerical way to quantify its value to us. And then I think this is the last slide, so everybody clap. Additional roads should be considered. Clinton brought one up. Internally, we came up with another one today. Well, actually Jennifer came up with it, uh, a few months ago. Clint mentioned the piece of East Melgarde out by the cemetery. Well, West Melgarde, I guess that would be considered. The piece of West Melgarde, uh, it's in really good shape because it was overlaid by the DOT, uh, following our reconstruction of Highway 12. But that's, that's another piece that's fairly heavily traveled. If you, we were to look at some of the other sections along there, that would be a logical piece to, to replace as well. So you've got that whole network taken care of. One of the things that we've talked about is whether, you know, there's anything out there that utilities need to be extended out there so that some additional things, I know there's some properties out there that probably will be, developed in the, you know, near-term future, 20 years or so. I'll, I'll bet there will be some housing developments or things out in that area. Another one that, that Jennifer had asked about, uh, a few months ago was that piece of North Dakota Street, north of Fairgrounds Road. Uh, obviously we just put the, the bike path out there, the pedestrian path, but that's another one that, that, uh, now has over 50% that would be within city limits. And that's kind of our criteria for when we would look at the possibility of taking it over. That's another road that probably it has some safety concerns as far as the, the narrow road and ditches are fairly steep. Um, I don't know that we've got a, a terrible accident history out there, but with more housing developed out there, you'll see a lot more traffic as well. You know, we don't have that, that pavement or that number yet, but we'll see very quickly after the new homes are possible area and part of, uh, Bellicus subdivision, that'll change those numbers significantly on, on what we'll see for daily numbers.
Groundbreaking, um, groundbreaking is December 4th and planned two phases, 150 total houses. So with what we've seen from Happy in the past, we can probably expect 150 houses within the next three years. So that'll significantly change the use of that road.
And I guess that is the end of what I thought needed to be discussed. I guess I'll open it up to questions and, and comments at this point.
I should, I should have one observation here. I'd never thought about the two lanes on North Old 281 before. If you think about it, that was done when there was no alternative, other 281. And when I look at your numbers here, there's actually more traffic on the narrow Melgarde Road segments than there is on, uh, you know, that kind of surprises me. I guess it's just been around here long enough, having my head that we didn't have an alternative to North 281. So, uh, to even think about reducing that to one lane is, uh, new.
Correct. And you know, it, it's one of those deals where nothing stays the same. We've, we've rerouted traffic off on the bypass now. There's a fair amount of the traffic that used to come through town now is going around. That was the intent with the bypass and that section may not be warranted the same way it was at one time. So.
Other comments, Dan?
So you, you talked about the two-year arterial construction program. What would be, would you look at doing maybe every, every three years trying to reduce those costs and then do something else in the interim? Or are you, are you thinking, I know you have, you know, Melgarde Road, involved in this and that would be a major arterial road, but what, are we, are we, do you think we're done with arterial roads? In your opinion?
No, well, what, what we're, what we're looking at probably is maybe a different type of repair to some of these roads. I don't, you'll, you'll never be done, but maybe reconstruction is not always what we want to do and.
But like for Melgarde Road, that would have to be a, wouldn't that be have to be a total reconstruction?
Most of those would be, yeah, because they're so narrow, it just would not make sense. And that's where, that's where, um, with a lot of these pavements, I don't think the cheaper alternative is the best route because you're not addressing the safety concerns. You're not addressing maybe the drainage. So to put a new mat on top doesn't really take care of what we normally want to try to do with those pavements. So yeah, there, there would be a lot of those that I don't know that the alternative is a good idea, other than maybe kicking the can down the road until we decide what we want to do for extending utilities or things of that nature that you know, there might be some other reasons why we want to just extend the life of that pavement for a temporary time.
So what, uh, on this list that we see here, uh, what will the state participate in?
What the state is doing, I think I, I indicated in, in that, uh, word document that was sent out that we're getting about $800,000 a year. That is the state's participation right now. They have taken federal money. They, they've put that into their system and they're kicking out, uh, 800,000 and it's a, there's a, a ratio that they're doing for each one of the class one cities so that we get a, a proper proportion of that money. They don't have to do it, but they've been sharing that money for as long as I've been in the system. So.
So we, um, we use the Second Street Overpass money for different projects, correct? Didn't we, we, we did not pave the Second Street Overpass and we use those dollars for other projects. Is that correct?
Well, I don't know that there's a, a pot of money that Carl has identified as Second Street Overpass Repair. Whether that money is still there or not in, in that kitty would be debatable.
Well, it goes into a fund.
Yeah.
And.
It really hasn't been spent, but it.
So please identify it. I mean, it's.
You know, it was $800,000, I believe at the time, or some number in that range. And I don't know that it was ever identified where it just sat there just for Second Street.
So the 800,000 that, uh, the, the state gives us, uh, we can use that for any road that we deem necessary.
As long as it's transportation related, they don't want to see it used for equipment or things of that nature, you know, snowplows. But as long as it's for repairing roads, even our patch and seal program would qualify for that, that money to be used for.
So can you review the reasons that we didn't do the Second Street Overpass at that, uh, particular time?
It was a decent pavement and it just, we had other priorities and to replace that where we had so many other needs and so many other spots, it just didn't make sense to me. And I think the council at the time agreed with that logic. Uh, it was, it was in decent enough shape where a couple of repairs, we've figured it was still a decent, you know, and the, the last one, the last repair we made here, was that 2008? 2009, somewhere in there, that, that one really brought it back to pretty decent shape. This last effort, we've still got a few bumps, but it's much improved over what it was.
If I remember right, uh, at that point in time, we knew, uh, I thought the, the dollars were basically we're, we're trying to do other projects and we knew that if we ever came back to this, that the, um, the, uh, dollars needed would have, you know, inflation would
Yeah.
increase the cost
Absolutely.
of doing it.
Yeah.
And so we made the determination that it was good enough at that point in time.
It still rides fairly decent.
I think it does, rides pretty nice.
Questions, anybody else?
Um, can you explain what, uh, a crack, cause you know, you talked about extending some of the life. Um, let's take Dakota Street, south of Eighth Avenue. If you take out the railroad tracks, the road still rides pretty decent. Except where, you know, we've had some patches where they've, uh, had to repair maybe some water line and now you get that, uh, shifting of that pavement.
On what side of Dakota Street are you talking?
South.
South?
South of Eighth.
Okay.
Yeah.
South of Eighth?
South of Eighth Avenue, but well, basically from
Eighth to Sixth.
Eighth to Sixth. There are some spots in there that do ride rough and that's basically where we've had to patch, uh, by the, um, Healthcare Plus Federal Credit Union where we've had extensive patching, uh, because we had to move a sewer line, I believe.
Yeah, there was a sewer that went right under their building, right?
Yep, and that we had to move. Um, but if you really go north of the railroad tracks to Eighth Avenue, it actually rides fairly decent. And I'm, you know, more interested in, because I do know that the DOT, uh, does this a lot. They have a concrete surface. They'll go and they'll put that asphalt overlay on and just extend that life out. Uh, and that's kind of what that cracked seat and asphalt overlay is.
What, what ends up happening, a concrete pavement is slabs. So everything, it's, everything's rigid in that slab. And then you put asphalt on, that's a flexible pavement. So what ends up happening, you look downtown, everything is concrete with asphalt on top. And you can see every one of those where the, the slabs shift a little bit. By cracking and seeding, you're taking away the large slabs and you're creating smaller pieces. And then the pavement can act as a flexible pavement and it won't move and shift as badly. That's, that's the idea behind it.
Okay. And, and I do know that, uh, before we reconstructed Sixth Avenue, uh, from Fifth Street heading out, that was heavily asphalted by DOT and at some point your pavement gets to the point where it just starts.
If, if the underlying concrete is, um, starting to delaminate or it starts flaking, there's nothing to bind to then. And that's, that's a lot of the condition issues that the DOT has had. When the concrete just starts coming apart, the asphalt on top, you'll be patching that spot every year. It's going to keep coming apart.
As far as, you know, there's, you know, I, I was thinking about the same road she was, there's actually more roads, um, that we all probably could sit there and think of. What do you use as, um, what you think your criteria? Cause like you say, we went through this maybe 10 years ago, we planned out, you know, the next few years. That was pretty clear because it was more of finishing certain things, but we are getting to the point where some of that pavement now at Eighth Ave, or, uh, Dakota Street's pushing 35, 40 years?
Late seventies is when a lot of that was done.
Yeah, so.
Forty-five.
Yeah, so, um, what criteria, because like you say, we've never talked about going back into, to repair some of the roads that this was used on that two-year cycle at that time.
Well, you know, the criteria, if, if we start seeing like some of the stuff being developed, the Walmart area that South Melgarde probably never would have been considered until we started having development take place adjacent to it. That changes your thought process. And we end up with a lot of that bypass traffic comes in from the Eisenhower Circle area, those areas, people aren't going to take Sixth Avenue coming back around. They're going to try to use that Melgarde stretch, uh, as much as possible if they're going to that side of town, not necessarily just Walmart, but that side of town. Same is true for that, the bypass, anybody on the north side, if they're going into that southwest part of town, they're not going to go through the heart of town usually. They're going to use the bypass to work their way around. So the criteria that we would use typically is as we see traffic pattern shift, things of that nature. And then consequently, you're going to start seeing maybe more accidents or, or things where maybe with, with, uh, a thousand vehicles a day, it's not a big deal, but all of a sudden intersections start getting clogged up. A lot of the stuff related to, um, where the high school moved shifted how traffic behaved on that south side of town. It significantly affected some of the other roadways, so.
And of course there was that happy division down there too, because you know, I was sitting there thinking earlier, you know, we have, what happens when you have the 150 new homes, Bellicus is kind of filled up and then you're having the county fair going on at the same time. Um, would that be a concrete road? I don't know. I, we have never explored doing curb and gutter with a good asphalt mat in a three-lane configuration.
Well, it's, any of those are possible. The, the reason why concrete is used in some of those is just because typically you end up having a little higher truck traffic. Number one, number two, you end up with some, maybe some rutting things going on that with some of the new pavements, rutting isn't probably as prevalent as it used to be with the older, older style pavements.
And I think Melgarde with the truck traffic would have to be concrete, but like up by Happy, I think, I mean, you're talking local traffic in one busy week a year.
Well, and historically Aberdeen has never put in thick asphalt pavements. We have always used thinner pavements, uh, tried to use more gravel base and that probably has created a, uh, sometimes a problem for us in how they've, they've, uh, performed over years, you know, where you end up having to do more maintenance than you probably should have. So.
The bypass was nine inches, correct? Nine inches of asphalt? The overpass, sorry.
Eight inch.
Eight inch.
Uh, what, you know, if you were to look at some of these ones that don't have curb and gutter, you're looking at redoing them with or what? What do you determine when it turns into curb and gutter or not?
Well, you know, part of it's going to be just to, for safe, safety reasons, so you don't have things exiting off the sides or having shoulders. Um, we probably, frankly, we probably would have done curb and gutter on that piece out by Shopko on Eighth Avenue. But it didn't lend itself the, the way it was laid out. It, we would have had to lower the road. It, it was going to defeat the purpose of what we did with the white topping. So we didn't go that route. There's, there's a lot of different factors that would go into it. And if, if we're going to go to the three-lane configuration, we'd probably look at, curb and guttering a lot of times, but the stuff out on, on, going out on 281 North, uh, the old 281 section, I don't know that that would necessarily need to be a curb and guttered section. So we'd look at both o- options and see what we thought was best, but I don't know, I don't know that I've ever really come across criteria.
I think that area, the, the drainage actually works pretty well and you've got a lot of right-of-way there, so, I don't know that curb and gutter would be necessary. I, I think, you know, visualizing that, I've always thought that that would be just a, a regular rural section like it is now.
You're talking on North.
Old 281.
But like over by Walmart area that would, with the shoulder so high and stuff?
There's probably some, some, um,
There's going to be an issue with, with the stuff going south by Walmart because you're going to have to put the pipe in the ground. I think, uh, what we've got there for ditch sections and stuff, uh, just creates a, an unsafe condition, number one. But you know, where Stu was going with it, I think was the curb and gutter is going to keep the, the stuff confined within the roadway and then it's going to go off into a, a pipe of some kind that's buried. And if we don't have to worry about whether the ditches are wide enough, you know, and stuff, we can make that ditch work for us, but that ditch work for us, but if you, you have to lower the road so far to make that ditch slope not become a problem, that's, that's where considerations change a little bit.
Anybody else?
Alan? Um, my priorities would be addressing the safety issues above the ride and condition issues. And as I consider the suggestions, uh, and also the bullet points here, um, my, uh, top priority would be number six, the East Melgar. And I think that we should give serious consideration to the North Dakota, going from Fairgrounds North, uh, adding it into the two-year plan, because within three years, we will have, um, a lot of traffic there, um, young traffic, uh, pedestrian too. Um, I, when you consider East Melgar, and it sounds like the idea would be to have that same three-lane configuration with the curb, would there be also, uh, the wider sidewalk as in a, a extension of the bike path?
Well, and actually, that was a question that I, that I had thought about asking and didn't know if we're getting too far into the weeds on it, but do we continue to put in these pedestrian facilities? I- it seems to be, be a very popular thing.
They are.
And there's probably no cheaper time to do it than initial construction.
Yeah.
But yeah, I, I guess we typically would do it unless we were asked to stop doing it.
Yeah, I see, um, just, uh, heavy ramping up of semi-traffic cattle trucks, um, more and more all the time as the beef plant, uh, is taking, uh, more head of cattle. Um, there's other animals that are, uh, not being counted in this traffic count of thirty-six hundred, these are the deer that go north and south across it. And you should be counting those because, uh, you know, your headlights are illuminating a deer that's just very close to the road, it's a very narrow, uh, passage. Um, uh, all year long with, with Central, you have students that sometimes drive a little too fast and they're approaching that intersection, uh, from their westbound, coming toward the high school. And it would be a really nice thing to have a turning lane there and have a di- traffic that could be, uh, not bottlenecked right there at the stoplight. Uh, there are some collisions right there. Um, I've seen over the years, uh, living in the southwest, a lot of vehicles that slide off, um, on that curve and, and from the curve to Roosevelt, I think that would be, um, a nice improvement, there's a lot of bicycle traffic too, from, uh, you know, the, um, the thrill seeker types that either go solo or in small groups that, um, it would be really nice to have a wider roadbed for them as well, sometimes you're sharing and when you steer around them, uh, it creates a head-on situation, I think it would, just for safety, this is really a favorite, uh, option here, number six.
Okay.
Get a couple more things. So if we're looking at, uh, the Melgar Road, um, either one, where would you bring the utilities in? If we, if we're looking at development out in that area, would you bring it from the high school or would you come from the, from the north? Where, where's the closest utilities that we would?
We have, we have water and sewer stub east of the high school intersection, east of Roosevelt already. Um, so you've got water and sanitary that's already stubbed there, and actually, we've got storm sewer stubbed out so that, um, some of the developments to the north, that was the intention, um, back when Pagonis's had that property. The idea was that there would have to be some way for them to get their drainage out because they were kind of trapped in their area. We didn't want to push more down through the Moxon Creek drainage initially, we wanted to be able to take it uh, more along Melgar and we developed capacity for that, so a lot of that stuff would be something that I think it's conducive right off that intersection of Roosevelt right now to extend.
So have you taken a look, okay, thanks, um, I, I kind of share the same feelings as Alan, that, uh, that would be a wise piece, but one of the things that we're working on is the comp plan and have we taken a look at the comp plan and where uh, future development might be, um, be happening, which I believe is, we're happy is going in the north? Have we, have we considered any of that in, in this type of discussion?
There have been some discussions, Brett, you want to address that?
There has been some discussions, as Robin said, but nothing's been solidified yet since the comp plans still isn't a draft yet, so.
Okay, that might be something that this council should look at before any decisions are made.
Clint? Um, I, I, and I agree with Alan, but you know, if you're doing East Melgar, um, through the curve, you're then going to go back to that old
Then you do the south.
Yeah, then you'd have to do the south, okay. And, and I, I think that's true, I think with, uh, especially the high school, and I, I wasn't thinking about a bike path, but uh, you know, you see so many people, uh, walking along Sixth Avenue on the side without the sidewalk. Uh, how many of those, uh, maybe in that southern part would, uh, ride a bike or take, uh, a bike path? Uh, as you say, um, down on that, uh, south Melgar part. Um, of course, we do have homes that aren't in city limits on that part. Um, but, um, I think as far as the development potential and the safety concerns, uh, for me, Melgar would probably be the top of the list, and I think there's other things we can do on some of these other pavements on years when we have, uh, maybe not doing a Klein Street storm sewer, we can go in and do, like you say, the overlay, uh, with asphalt, I think, old two eighty-one, until we figure out what we're going to do with that intersection. Um, should be overlaid, I mean, the shoulders are non-existent, um, the turning lanes that are even in asphalt are falling apart, but that would be a good candidate for, uh, just an overlay. Um, the crack seat and overlay at a much cheaper price than, uh, a total reconstruction until we, and you, you call it kicking the can down the road, I'm talking, you know, and I'm approving probably a good road section already that maybe isn't the best ride, but you know, why, until the utilities are done, why tear up everything and, 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 you know, put in new utilities if we can go another ten years and then plan for, you know, maybe doing a Dakota Street and upsizing some uh, sewer, those types of things, cause, um, you know, I think if you're a growing community, you also have to look at we need land to develop and if we can do this right and we have time to work on a fee structure to maybe recapture some of our costs uh, before we even get to this point, opening up that land and, you know, making it easier for developers to have land to develop. Um, I think it's also a potential also that as a growing community, we ha- then might have more land a- available to develop for homes.
Yeah, I completely agree with you Clint, the, um, from my experience on the Happy Board, I can tell you that the only thing that delayed us from starting the next subdivision was finding a piece of land. I mean, it was, it was very, very difficult to find a piece of land that, that could be developed. The way, um, the way our projects are used to be, you know, that we're used to be doing our projects, so somebody might be able to develop a smaller piece, but quite honestly, we even looked at smaller pieces and people were like, yeah, it's not for sale. So I mean, we saw that kind of thing too, it, it is, uh, it is a challenge to find land that's contiguous to the city that can be developed, that people want to let you develop.
Anyone else for Robin?
All the southsiders want the East Melgar Road.
Any more from you, Robert?
No, really, I, I just wanted to open that dialogue up and, and, uh, if you have any more thoughts or votes for your favorite section.
That, that it for you?
Yes.
I, I had one, one quick comment I wanted, I wanted to make, I get a list every day of the, uh, water shut-offs in the city, and I just thought it might be appropriate here on Thanksgiving week, uh, when all of us are having our Thanksgiving dinner, there were eight people today who are in bad enough situation wherever they're living that they couldn't even pay their water bill. And I, when I read that every day, I wonder what's, you know, what's behind these households, and I know some of them end up be absentee people or whatever, but a lot of them are, are people who not only can't make their car payment or their, their house payment, they can't even get their toilets to flush, so uh, for Thanksgiving week, uh, when I noticed that today and eight people on there, which is a few more than usual, that, uh, just occurred to me, so.
Mayor, may I, real quick, I'm sorry, I wanted to clarify something before we close the meeting, I had answered your question earlier about the possible fine for somebody in the park, it's not one fifty, it's one twenty. Okay.
Um, I have just the fact that I would like to give
This evening, because after the most recent snowstorm, we always have a little dialogue with the public dealing with some issues, but I just wanted you to know, uh, in checking our records, we have over twenty-eight hundred people that signed up for the snow removal alerts when our first couple of years, we only had like thirteen hundred, and so that's increased significantly, so the word is getting out and it is helping.
Great. Do we know how many cars we towed after this last one, cause it looked like a lot?
Four hundred and thirty-nine toes was the last number I saw, so, uh, tickets would probably approach five hundred. You know, there's a difference between the number that's actually towed and how many tickets are issued, but, uh, I don't know Tanner, if you heard any different numbers, but four thirty-nine was the last number that I saw from the tow side of it. And of course, we would, you know, encourage any kind of article you wanted to do to get people to start signing up for that for our messages, whatever, it's, it's out there, people don't have to be in, in the dark about it, and just about everybody has a smartphone now, so.
And I heard on the radio they were advertising it too. So they were, I was just listening to the radio and they said, hey, you can sign up for text alerts, uh, to know when the city's plowing, so.
Yeah, I was traveling, uh, Friday from the east coast and I found, uh, the American News website and the snow alert, very useful because it makes a big difference depending on the time of the snow event, when it's occurring like that and you you know, by the time the newspaper's delivered at six AM, plowing starts in your neighborhood at six or at seven, and those snow alerts were actually very useful, I could see it from, um, traveling in, at the airport in Minneapolis and knew I had to move my car, it was a blessing, so, it's a good thing.
Anything else before we turn?
Um, just one last thing, I see they put a new electrical pole over on Eighth and two eighty-one.
Yes.
Okay, so we'll be able to finish that bike pass section?
It's done.
Oh, it's done?
Yeah.
All right.
I was as surprised as you were, I thought, you know, there was enough going on there where I didn't think we'd get it done this year and they, they blanketed it and they were doing it last week, so.
When, yeah, when I, when I drove, they hadn't poured the section yet, but if it's done, great.
Move to adjourn.
Motion bunsness and second, uh, Remley, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.